The agenda approval, is there any additions or exclusions to the agenda?
Yes.
I would like to edit the report. Shared service agreement.
I'm going to start me out.
Okay.
Does it? Oh, it is. I'm sorry, it is.
Mr. Deputy Supervisor, I'd like to remove the approval of the minutes and also to add the waste drop-off date, which will be coming up.
Okay. Is your motion approved as amended?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
With that, we'll move on to department head concerns. I'm sorry. The abstract, Mr. Moreyel.
Yes. April 2018, four, nine, eighteen action. I move to approve the regular extract of claims numbered eight oh three to nine sixty-seven and recommend payment in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-one cents, plus a post-audit of fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to department head concerns. Chief?
I'm on the agenda.
Okay. Mr. Masters. Why don't you go after, please, Mr. Otten.
Hi there. We've got a couple of things for you. We finally got our contract in for the water department's pickup truck and the fire hydrants gave the contract to our attorney, Mr. Preci, for review. And as soon as that's okay, supervisor can sign it, we'll send that in and we can get put in for reimbursement on that pickup truck. That's that.
Can we move for approval, subject of your?
I generally prefer we don't do that if we don't have to. I think we have time for computer review prior to taking them over.
Okay.
Next thing I have is the resolution for Greenway. How do you want me to, yeah, just the bottom section?
It would be just the, it would, yeah, it would be just the bottom section.
Okay. This is a seven hundred thousand dollar request going into Greenway for the Lewiston Town Park, that's down by Lower River Road, and we're submitting this into the host community standing committee on June twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth. And the resolution, it says, town boards requesting funding from the Niagara River Greenway Host Standing Committee in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars. Therefore, the town authorizes and submits a request for additional funding for the Lewiston Town Park Development Project in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars.
Move this, Red.
I would read from the first whereas on that.
Okay.
Read that through so that's hard.
Too many whereas and what's for.
Donna will have to certify that that was the resolution that was made.
It says, whereas the town board desires to use the town of Lewiston's Niagara River Greenway funds for the Lewiston Town Park Development Project for cost needed to complete this project, whereas the town board has to apply and request funding from the Niagara River Greenway Host Standing Committee and therefore let it be resolved that the town board authorizes and submits a request for funding for the Lewiston Town Park Development Project in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars.
One more.
Sorry, I want it resolved that Steven, Steve Broderick, as supervisor of the town of Lewiston, is hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funding from the Niagara River Greenway Host Standing Committee to complete the Lewiston Town Park Development Project.
That's it, Ed?
Hallelujah.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Bill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then we have, we're submitting a New York project this Thursday. It was for a culvert project. I spoke with the highway superintendent and our tone engineer, and Bob, if you would help me with the resolution that we need for the, or the, excuse me, the seeker.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this is a replacement of the Fletcher Road culverts down near the KOA, and it's essentially a replacement in kind, so therefore, in accordance with the seeker regulations, it's defined as a type-two action, okay? And it's in section six seventeen point five, paragraph C, or subset, sub-paragraph five, it says, "Street openings and right-of-way openings for the purpose of repair or maintenance of existing utility facilities are defined as a type-two action." So I would, I would ask that the board consider passing a resolution to that effect and declaring it a type-two action.
Move to, move ahead with the project, declaring it a type-two definition for the culvert replacement project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You don't need any of the numbers in that?
No.
No, there you find it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that's all I have for you tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dash, now, did you have something for the board?
No. I got on the agenda.
All right, thank you. No. Nothing to add?
Bob, anything else?
I have one more item relative to the Town Park project. We can do it now or do it later, or whatever you like.
Do it now.
Do it now. This is other, just simple seeker process, is that as a follow-up to the authorization, I would ask the board consider declaring that project a type-one project under seeker and then be, allowing us to begin conducting a coordinated review of the agency declarations and all that kind of stuff.
Do you want to declare it a type-one or treat it as a type-one?
I would, I would treat it as a type-one, and then we would, we would go through the process in accordance with type-one.
Move that the town move ahead with the Town Park, treating it as a type-one action and conduct a coordinated review? Review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any opposed? Just brief discussion. We're moving ahead with this, but we still have a lot of different agencies that we have to be in contact with for their approval. And then, once we get those all lined up and approved, then we'll move ahead with the different public information sessions to let the public know what the ideas on the park are. And it's a work in progress. The park can be modified as we go along.
And we're also looking for input from the board.
Looking for input. You know, go to Recreation Commission, or Environmental Commission, and so we'll try to get everything lined up and keep moving ahead.
Yep, this is just the beginning step of the project. Very, very beginning tendency.
Okay. If you have legal?
On the agenda.
Okay.
May I?
Yes.
In your package is a proposal for the front door for your handicap switch. The doors were installed in two thousand and seven, and we're having an issue with the one switch, and it needs to be updated, upgraded.
I'm, I want to, the more about it, we're ahead with that, Mr. Deputy Supervisor.
Does this have to be part of it?
No.
Not at present, so you can.
The situation is that this needs to be taken care of, and the funding was going to come out of equipment from the town clerk, and we had the money set aside for two more microphones for this room for our board meetings. But if we are continuing to investigate other sound systems, we may use the infrastructure money to upgrade our entire system here. Because this system has its limitations, and as we try to coordinate with the new camera, the new sound system, it would probably be better to take the next step. So use the money that we have in equipment, move for approval of eight hundred forty-one dollars. Can, a little more discussion? I don't know if this is an appropriate time, Bill, but where do we stand with that recording the town board meetings? Dr. Abubanzu has been working on trying to get a microphone that will work in harmony with what we have right now. What he originally had, had a back hum to it, which would be very irritating for our purpose. So he's asked that we not move ahead with the right way, and he's still doing some more research. He talked to me within a week, and he said he's zeroing in on the right type of microphone. Okay, thank you. The camera's been purchased, and that is, that will work beautifully, but it's the sound system that we're concerned about. Right, so you have a motion to approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Where did you see the funds are coming from now?
Of equipment. Okay, who are the finance?
I'd like to ask the board to approve a post-audit payment to the Niagara County Water District for the first quarter of two thousand and eighteen. We always pay at the beginning of the month. We didn't receive the invoice in time for the cutoff date for the normal extract.
Do we have an amount?
The amount is one hundred thirty-five thousand, thirty-six dollars and six cents.
Move to add that to the post-abstract?
Second. Any discussion?
Can that be signed by Deputy Supervisor tomorrow, set out?
It's a plan.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Anything else? Finance?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, under old business, local law regarding the solar energy systems, Mr. Preci.
So a final draft that was provided to all the board members early last week. You've had a chance to review it, you're, you can move and act on that law tonight.
Move for approval, general energy system, local law.
Second.
Brief discussion.
Yes, sir.
While I was on my last adventure, I came across a very large solar farm, and it was right up next to the road, and it was close to the neighbors. And I found that offensive, and I was glad that our law has setbacks and kind of some problem.
To win or minimum, yeah.
Making this obstructed.
I think it's a very, very solid, very well done, Mr. Preci.
Thank you. All right, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can we do a roll for the vote, just so we have that?
Councilman Dax?
Aye.
Councilman Guyden?
Yes.
Councilman Jacoby?
Aye.
Councilman Moreyel?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to remove the board commission vacancies. There's no, no new applications for my positions yet. The shared service agreement with Lewiston Porter Central School District?
First, we've got to make a motion, and it's a intermunicipal cooperation agreement. First, make that motion before we can give authorization for supervisor to sign this. I'd like to make that motion, accept the agreement.
Second.
Whether you've got discussion, or is there any?
I can briefly talk on it. I know Mr. Dash now could talk on it if he wants as well, but a lot of time and effort actually went into putting this agreement together between the town and the school district. It allows us to continue the relationship we've had there, where our baseball tournaments occur during the summer. We can use their fields, they can use our fields, and it sets forth the terms for using the fields. I would just credit the supervisor, Mr. Dash now, for the time and effort they put into working this out with the school district. It did take some time, and it did take several meetings.
It's, Loopport School District did approach us to redo this contract. We have had shared service agreements with them in the past. The biggest change is, is the overtime rates. Lewiston uses Loopport gyms in off-hours, so they now are contractually obligated to bring somebody in to open up those doors, and they're going to build back that, that used to us. So that's what kind of started it. We put in some standards for maintenance, whether it's the gyms or the baseball fields, so they know that we're taking care of everything. And I don't think there was much of a doubt that we did to begin with, but everything's all on paper now, so we, we have something that we can, we can refer to. If there's ever a changing of the board, or like Loopport had a changing of the superintendent, who was really unfamiliar with, with the relationship going into it. Okay?
Okay. Seconds and some more of the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Then, the next motion is to approve Steve Broderick, Lewiston Town Supervisor, to sign a shared service agreement with Lewiston Porter Central School District for the years two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, and two thousand and twenty.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, move on to new business. We have a pond request from Gemla Creek Road. Would it speak to you?
It's just up through our office.
It's sitting up through our office. Just came through the place.
Maybe we should refer it to the building department.
I think Ryan was going to recommend that it's.
I was going to recommend that we table it for tonight, and I just had an opportunity because it was, it was brought to my attention at the very late last week, so I just wanted some time to look into our code, how we generally treat these ponds, and I think some discussion with the building department is appropriate regarding just the pond itself, its proximity to neighbors.
One difference from this to another pond that we've had before us is that none of the materials, the materials may leak in the property.
Yeah, on its face, it looks like it complies, but I'd like you to take a look into it too. So I make a motion, we table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, Department Hire, Mr. Bax.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Thomas Pataglia to fill an open position in, his open part-time position in the police department to begin April ninth, which is today, with the starting wage determined per the contract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
This is in the budget, correct?
It's replacing an existing position.
Not creating a new position.
Okay. Next is the Sanborn Park Greenway Funding, Mr. Moreyel.
Okay. I'm going to bring Mike up, ask Mike for a little discussion on this. This is for a motion, allow Recreation Department to pursue funding from the Niagara Greenway Committee for needed additions to Sanborn Park. Sanborn Park is a previously approved location for Greenway funding, and this project should be added for approved projects completed in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve at this park. Mike, you want to touch base on what we're going to get done there?
Yeah, so just again, quick history on it. We do have a longstanding lease with the Sanborn Fire Company for use of their, their property. We run day camp there during the summer. We maintain that at Sanborn Town Park. The park does, has a few needs that when we met with the Sanborn Fire Company last year, we went through a whole nice wish list with them. At this time, we want to submit these three items to the Greenway for funding, how to get these done. First one's going to be your handicap accessible pathway. Path to be either concrete or sealed asphalt, depending on material labor cost after bidding. Path to connect north to parking lot at Tallman to Elm Street, as well as connection to each playground, bathroom, ice rink, and basketball court, providing community access to each station in the park. In total, the path is five hundred and ten linear feet. I believe it's a six-foot path, that's with the ABA, the ABA compliance.
Yes.
Right now, there is a smaller path there. It is asphalt, it is crumbling. We have weeds and everything going through it, like to get it done correctly. That path gives us a nice little start, so it doesn't connect all the different features in the park. Insulation LED lighting. Install three high-density LED lights along the pathway in the park. Insulation of these lights will allow Recreation Department to offer illumination during evening activities on the basketball court, playground, ice rink, as well as providing adequate light to discourage vandalism in the park and promote safety. Please note that a similar light was installed at Colonia Village Park, it has been successful in those roles. Again, high-efficiency LED lights, controlled, the fire department has proved to take control of the light switch there. When we do have later in the evening activities, like they do, these guys do a good job, run their, they freeze out and run their ice rink in the winter. The basketball court is very busy. There is some other evening activities where we can flip those lights on and off, and possibly even put it on a lower setting for a little bit later in the evening, just to discourage teenagers and whoever else is out there doing things that they shouldn't be doing. Vandalism at Sanborn Park is, has been a consistent problem, not a, not a huge problem, but anything we can do to get, to get a little help in that area is always the best way.
Different than any other park?
No, no different than any other park. There's a few that are, that are worse than others, but Sanborn's place is consistent. Bathroom restoration. Sanborn Park currently has sewers and infrastructure in place for indoor bathrooms within their storage building. I thought I had posted pictures, I'm sorry, I'll email those out to you. This project has installed new fixtures, lights, electric service to allow these bathrooms to be open to the public during normal park hours. We'd also be installing flooring and tile, as well as cosmetic upgrades within the school of work. Real simple, where the two existing bathrooms are there, they're, they're not used during the course of the year. They're basically just toilets. We'd like to make them public, public bathrooms and maintain them, so.
And handicapped accessible?
I believe so, yes.
So they're in, the toilets are in the public, I'm sorry, in the storage building right now? How would you describe that? Just a.
Yeah, just a.
Multi-purpose room.
Yeah, we basically, you do, Recreation Department does have a small area that they keep their supplies in on one end. The middle portion, we just keep a lot more different things for taking care of the grounds and things. And then at the far end, the north end, is where there's bathrooms, male and female, on the east and west side of the building. If you guys aren't familiar with the building, it's a very sturdy, nice, it's a, it's a concrete brick building.
Yeah, block building.
Yeah, so we're, we're not worried about any, any type of damage or anything there. It's kind of, it's a, it's a good location for this type of property.
So you're going to utilize that building, is what I guess I was saying?
I'm sorry?
Yes, you're going to utilize that building?
Yes. Yeah, well, we, we have it for twenty, the last twenty years.
So it's going to basically give an interior upgrade, really, is all you're doing?
Cosmetically, yeah. And then, again, replacing all the fixtures and all that.
Does it currently have bathrooms there?
Yes, but they're basically just toilets.
Okay. And then, the lights, are they new lights or are they replacements?
We're going to have to install new lights, frame lights.
And then who would pay the monthly electric bill for those?
I believe we currently pay the electric out of the, right now, that building. I want to say that with you. Actually, I would, I can cut in. Right now, the town does pay for the lights that we do have, they go onto the ice rink, and it's on a, on a timer. And I imagine these things would probably use, probably far less, far less energy, whether it is a separate meter.
This is all a bid process, obviously. Each one of these is all a bid process.
Yeah, none of these have been bid tested. Yeah, the next step in the process, basically, we sit down with Bernie, who come up with the Greenway application. These are estimates, estimates based on us bringing in professionals to, to do the work, give us the estimate, then we will have to bid on this as soon as we get approval very quick.
If you have enough flexibility in here, I would strongly encourage you to have the pictorial tables that are accessible for the handicapped individuals with the extended top, and a pad on which to put that pictorial table, so that, so they come in in a wheelchair and go right up the path, right to the, the area. And is there a timeframe on how late the park is open at night, other than?
All of our parks are dawn to dusk.
So the lights are for special events and?
Yes. Supervised at dusk, always supervised at dusk. Again, if that's what, when we, when we discuss this with the fire department, we talked about the switch being only available to them, so if they do have something going on, they can flip the lights on and off, or if they have supervision available. So you're not, so it's going to cost the town the lights or money to, to staff it or anything like that, that's a concern.
So we just need a motion to allow Recreation Department to pursue the funding from the Niagara River Greenway Committee for the needed additions to the Sanborn Park?
Yeah, with this approval, Bernie and I start writing the grant, and we can present it to the Greenway Committee.
Does, does it go to the head, it goes to the host committee?
Just the host committee. We already got consistency with the board, so we don't have to.
So move.
I have a question for this, is for, you've just approved seven hundred thousand dollars
that you're using for the Greenway for the park down there. We didn't have these dollar amounts of this information, so we haven't checked the availability of the funds or where the Greenway stands, to make sure that there's enough money for this.
Well, the seven hundred thousand dollars for the Riverside Park can be spread out over a period of time. We have some flexibility there. We don't necessarily have to spend it all in a year, but we had to have a figure amount to move ahead.
All right, but like, when you pass that resolution, does that go to the Greenway? Because then the Greenway allocates that money at that point in time. And I just, you know, it's like, or do we need to make that resolution a different dollar amount? I'm, I'm not sure.
How much money, how, what's your estimate?
Seventy-five thousand.
Oh, seventy-five thousand.
Well, but with the seven hundred thousand, I mean, it's like, I'm not, I can't tell you off the top of my head where we stand with it.
I think we've.
I mean, we've got five hundred and ten coming in July, but if this is something you're going ahead with, then we, you know, it's like, when you go to the Greenway, they allocate that money at that point in time.
Well, what we could do is, we could start the application, come up with an estimate, we'll meet with the finance department to validate how much money we have in the Greenway account, and then we can bring, we have to bring it for resolution anyway, so that'll give us enough time to get it started. But I guess, number one, you just need the board to say yes.
And we could amend our request to the Greenway Host Committee in regards to the seven hundred thousand, if we wanted to spread it out over two years. We have some flexibility.
Yeah, I, we just hadn't gotten the dollar amounts to really look into it until tonight, so it's like, you're talking big enough money that we got to make sure everything ties out.
I made the motion? Is there a second?
There was.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Same old.
Thank you.
Do we have a lease on the park or anything?
We do.
Right, I'll put it as the resolution, Town Park Development. The project. Yes, for.
Make a motion to approve the hiring of Eric John Kramer, thirty-nine fifty-four, Cockens Road, Youngstown, for a maintenance position. His start date will be April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the wastewater treatment plant. And I believe, is that a full-time position?
Yes.
Full-time position at, at contract rate.
Second. All in favor? Well, before you, just in the discussion, his address shows up as Youngstown, but remember, this is the sewer district.
Correct.
It doesn't have to be a town Lewiston resident, it's in the sewer district, and I couldn't tell you on that whether that's Lewiston or Porter. Cockens Road is listed as Youngstown.
He's actually the first house in the order.
Oh, but he's in the district.
Yes, oh, yeah. Jeff, you're budgeted for this?
Yes, it's to replace somebody who's, don't even know if they're coming back.
Okay. Right, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Bax, you, Mr. Guyden, you had the waste drop-off? Yes, we sent a postcard to the mail about special waste drop-off date. It will be one-time free collection event available to all Niagara County residents, and it will be in Niagara Falls. One second, I've got to come up with the address. Seventeen eighty-five New Road, Public Works Garage, and if you have any questions, there's the number to call, four three nine seven two four two, as to what they will or will not take, but it's a great opportunity to get rid of those old electronic devices that people put out in front of their house and that they're not picked up by the waste owners.
Also, it's pharmaceutical waste. Hazardous waste, pharmaceutical waste.
And it's also by appointment, I believe you have to call and schedule.
Yep.
All right. It's Saturday, April twenty-first, ten AM to two PM. Four hours for all the day.
You have to have an appointment.
You have to have an appointment, yes.
Call Mr. Train if they're not open.
With your TV.
Right. Drop off your TV.
Right. Right in front of the lease, in the highway in front of it.
Was there any other issues there, any lines from the board that I missed? I don't believe so. Yeah, no. And, all right, so now we move to privilege of the floor, Mr. Moreyel.
You know, I've spoken many times here about where to get rid of batteries, the ones on the smoke alarms. And I even called Niagara County, I mean, oh, and they didn't know. Called, talked to the town here, you people didn't know. Got a mailing from Senator Ork, and I thought, it was about something else, I thought, I'm going to call him up, see if he knows anything. Well, an aide answered, a young man answered, said he'd looked into it, got back to me in a day or so and said, "The Walmart on Military Grove will take them." So I quickly, had two years' work, six or seven of these, bagful. Take them into Walmart on Military Grove, he said that was the only one he found that takes them at the time. Go way in the back, talk to a young girl, she didn't know anything about it, but she's, "I'll take you to the department head." Okay, that person said, "Yes, we take them and we recycle them." And I don't know what that meant, but I quickly thrust the bag in her hand and I say to the young girl, I said, "You know, I said, "I'm 84 and I learned something new." She said, "So did I." Okay, now, I wrote to Senator Ork, "This young man deserves one, a raise. Two, he should run for office," and this is Sanborn, could be his campaign manager maybe, you know. But I really think that. Want to say one other thing. I've started playing, Paulette told me about playing euchre down in the Lewiston Town Senior Center. So every Thursday afternoon, we play, 100 hands in two and a half hours, we're not, you know, we're playing right along. Now, I play with seven men who think they know how to play and 13 women who do know how to play, so, they said. I tried to get back some of that tax dollars. I still never was happy, the senior center was way down there. As much money was poured into it, new roof and new everything else. I know Sanborn Fire Hall has a senior group, I, they don't play euchre all the time, so I kind of didn't join them, but, yeah. So anyway, I'm still looking around for a rich man, six months to live.
You were...
Good medical, put him in a nursing home right away. Okay, I, they said, "No living relatives." I put, "I'll take a shaky old hand, put my name in the will." They don't want to marry him or live with him, you know, so I was said. I've gone to a popular place and looked, he said, "I'm job hunting, maybe I should take a job here." I was at St. Mary's Hospital. I talked to the security guard, I said, "Do you ever hire women?" He said, "Oh, yeah." I said, "Well, I'll apply for a job, I want to be by the emergency room. I want to see when they load them out of the ambulance, all hammed and tamed they are." Okay, so I'm looking jewelry stores, if guys wearing a Rolex or pinky, I want to be the clerk.
Thank you. This is Warren. Dave?
You see how things change? When it was snowing, I was her favorite, now I'm ousted by Ork.
Sorry, Dave, sorry.
Not even Ork his aide.
Don't even, don't even really know if today, does somebody answer the phone?
Probably walking by the office.
Yeah. Probably a 15-year-old kid.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Warren.
Bernie?
Yes.
When you read that memo, it didn't designate the park. I know that you're talking about the river park, right?
Correct.
But it didn't say that in the memo.
And the...
Or did I miss it?
Uh, it's, it's attached to the Fletcher Road property.
Okay.
It's called what? We haven't come up with a name for it yet, maybe Lower River Road area, maybe the picnic area, it has come. If you have some suggestions, please send them forth.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, on April 21st, there is Earth Day cleanup in the village of Lewiston. And the upcoming meetings, we have a historic preservation meeting on April 9th at 6:00 p.m. in the lunchroom. April 10th.
Tuesday, right?
Environmental Commission, April 10th at 7:00 p.m. in the supervisor's office.
Excuse me, before you go, Mr. Jacoby? Yes. I don't believe it will tend open, so that's good.
Um, well, I'd like to go at least tomorrow.
Well, I'll stay, I'll stay in lockup. All right, okay.
Thanks.
Get arm wrestle. Zoning Board of Appeals will meet April 12th. Right? At 7:00 p.m. Planning Board will meet April 19th at 6:30 p.m. and the Verger Town Board meeting will be April 23rd at 6:00 p.m.